Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
For the meeting in order at, I said, no, is it six o'clock? Six o'clock on November 15th at the Village Hall. Okay. I'd like to, somebody can make a motion to amend the agenda so that the executive session is after the regular meeting. Because it might be a long one and then people don't want to have our public comments. Will somebody make that motion?
So where do you want to move the show after public comment?
At the, between 12:00 and 13:00.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Now we have the minutes of Monday, November 1st. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented?
Yes, possibly.
Okay.
We received a note from Bill that had a wording that Mike Beal had asked to be put in the parks section. And I'm just wondering, I don't think that has happened. And the correction that he wanted is, he also, it's in the parks section, which is on page two, number three, number nine.
Yeah.
And it reads currently, "He also stated that the estimates in cost presented at the last meeting were not actual cost estimates." And what Mike suggested the wording we changed to is, "He also clarified that the cost estimates for trail work included in the Ursa grant assume outside contractor costs, not town equipment personnel cost levels." So I have that here.
Okay, so that, you want to change that?
Yes, I think we should, according to.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think, I think he did mention that the, that excluded the town.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Wendy, do you have that changed?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes of November 1st? If not, a motion to accept?
So.
You have second?
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Remember, we're, we're, no, we're still in town, we have four people, so it's not a big difference. Now, Highway Report, I don't think Danny's coming. Good job, can you rephrase that because you like to attend. Let's see. November 9th, we met with Caroline Salva, who is Program Delivery Manager for FEMA, and went over what we had to be doing in order to get the projects started. She is coming this Thursday for the whole day and worked with us on that. And we vote for Danny. Okay? The 121 pagan is, is gone.
It's a bad spot.
Except, well, is there a bad spot? Okay, so Danny already contacted, you know?
Well, I did. Last night he did contact them, but I don't know what's happened.
Okay?
John, I'm not quite clear on what you mean by a bad spot.
If you're smart, the bridge, it's on the left-hand side, there's one spot that's not good.
On the side or on the actual pavement?
On the actual pavement. Actual road.
Okay.
And they're going to do something with it, but I don't know when.
Are they going to be basing?
I don't want to get into it, I really don't know that much about it, because it hasn't been really explained to me that much.
Okay. The other thing we have to talk about on the, is Townsend, is the paving. And the question is, how do you want to proceed? Do we accept the bid and pay it? Or do we accept the actual bill on the Townsend Road?
I don't think you have to, if you think they have to pay the actual.
I agree.
Well, so if that's the case, and everybody agrees with that, somebody want to make a motion?
Why don't we make sure we're, that we're paying the same thing? Is that a paving, what's that it stands?
Twenty-six.
Which is $26,230.
And I figured that out, and that is a tonnage that they would have used, you know?
Right.
And if he made a mistake, and figured it out, never forget it. But that is a tonnage it would have used.
Right. So we have an option, we can either fight it, or not pay it, or pay it, or pay half, or whatever, so. So we have a motion on the floor, no?
Some of it.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the Townsend? Do they pay it? If not, is it all in favor of paying the actual bill of $26,230, $24? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Does anybody know about the guardrails?
Yes, they canceled that.
This year?
No, just, just for that date. And I think they've rescheduled for 11:29. Do you remember that date? I have, I haven't seen you. I think maybe they're going to come 11:29 though.
Okay.
My goodness.
Well, the good thing about it, they can do that when it's cold. You can't pay it when it's cold, they can do that. Uh, anything else? We don't have Danny here, but does anyone have anything else about highway?
I did ask last, last meeting about painting the lines and helping out. Those have not been done when Danny said they were done.
No, they didn't, they weren't done. But I don't know what we can do about it. We don't have any control on what they, what they painted or what they don't paint. They were supposed to paint any road that was new. I don't know if they'll paint anymore with this weather. I guess we'll deliver it this winter.
Thank you. Also wanted to bring up a conversation Danny and I had about feedback we've received from members of the public about the pavement on Route 121 and how slick it can be. Of course, we know that it's subject to black ice, and people are familiar with that. Having said that, though, there's also some concern that it's slick even under normal conditions. And so Danny said that it's his, it's his thought that the reason it's slick is because it's so new, and that there's this material in there called fines, which John could explain better than I, but anyway, it has a very smooth surface. But Danny is quite sure that once it's plowed a few times and the traffic goes over it, it will become coarser and less slick. So I just wanted to give that as feedback to some of the concerns that have been raised.
I'm not sure what we can do about it, but.
We just have to wait until it wears down.
I think you're dealing with black ice, boy, we're not taking that into consideration. Because that, for the Fisher Bridge down, at this time of year, black ice is.
Yeah, it's the sun that's shining.
Do you think we should put a sign up or anything like that?
How can you do that? You don't know what I mean. Generally, you just have to be prepared for.
Vermont, I'm at least.
Yeah, you do. I mean, how do you know? I mean, just black ice occurs everywhere.
People that lived here a few years know this. Probably new people that don't live here.
Well, so you have stages to it, kind of.
I mean, there are signs that you see around on highways, "Bricks freezes first." And we don't have those, but I haven't seen them in any town either. Kim, you have anything you want to talk about?
No.
Okay. Hope everybody paid your taxes?
Yeah, we had a lot. I do want to mention, I'm not sure if everybody's aware, that VTEL did reimburse us for the damage on the culvert.
Okay, good.
Over our little house on School Street.
What is that?
VTEL paid us back, reimbursed us for the damage on the culvert.
Uh-huh.
We were charged by M&amp;M's $800 to fix the culvert that they drove through, that VTEL actually drove through. And they did pay that bill.
That's great.
And I think the rate for taxes were down to $7,000, and she had one more expect. It was.
We were right around five, we were anticipating another one, so.
Are you going to show your difference tomorrow?
Yep. I got one to put through because I couldn't put it through at four o'clock. So I'm going to put it through in the morning, and then we'll do some interest. Have some unhappy people, but.
Suzanne?
And eventually, um, next meeting, I will be bringing up the delinquent tax policy because our delinquent tax policy is only charging interest at the end of the month, just like we were doing our current taxes. And it's best if we can keep them coinciding together. So on the 15th, when I post interest, the delinquents should post at the same time. We're doing both during the 30th, we should actually be doing on the 16th. So there is just one little sentence we'll have to change and amend in the policy, but I wasn't prepared to be able to get it to you guys before, and absolutely going to do that next week.
Can you tell Bill, so, so we all know that we're going to message him?
Yeah.
Suzanne, I, I think you're, you're up for the Act 250.
I would like to acknowledge, especially the people on Zoom, that Scott Hitchcock is here with us tonight and open. The Act 250 Amendment Application Prehearing Conference should place on November 8th at the site of the Hitchcock Firewood LLC in Cambridge 4. And the purpose of the prehearing conference was to begin considering an application for an Act 250 amendment to an existing permitted commercial industrial property for an outdoor fire processing, firewood processing business. There were 11 people in attendance, including Erin Brondike, who is the state coordinator of the Natural Resources Board, two of the district environmental commissioners, including the chair, Heather and Scott Hitchcock were business owners, John McKay was the building owner, three property owners who registered as parties to the proceedings, and I represented the Town of Grafton as a member of the select board. For this meeting's minutes, I had, I did provide, I am providing to Wendy a list of the people who actually participated in the meeting. The prehearing consisted of Q and A by the participants, a demonstration of the log cutting and loading equipment to monitor its noise level, onsite visits to the property owner's home to monitor the noise level at that location, and prehearing participants were sworn in for this portion of the prehearing. So to that, I report on that aspect of the prehearing during executive session pursuant to Vermont Title I, Section 313.1b, matters pertaining to possible or pending civil litigation. The actual hearing will be held on December 3rd at 9:30 in Town Hall and on MS team. At that time, Joe and John will represent the select board at the hearing, and I will attend, but I will not participate. And just one final note, during the Q and A at the beginning of the prehearing, there were a number of questions about the status and remediation of the CIC building generally, and the Matrix Camp situation in particular. We also met an employee from the Chief Tubes organization who works in the building. I spoke with Rich Thompson, our town health officer, and we would like to suggest scheduling an update with Rich at a future select board meeting on this topic.
Okay. Would you like to put that for the next one, or is that something?
Yeah, that would be great, John. If it fits in with everything we'll have going on in the beginning of December.
Okay. Thank you, Suzanne. The cemetery committee. I reviewed, I took a ride last week to all the cemeteries, and all the cemeteries are in good shape except they're drenched, but the leaves have not been taken care of. So John and I talked to Bill, and we asked a number of people to present a bid to go ahead and blow the leaves before the snow comes. And I think we've received a bid.
Well, this, I believe this bid is for the actual cemeteries.
No, no, we don't want to do that tonight.
Yes, it's on here. It's open bids for cemetery maintenance. It's exciting. But she also said stated that she didn't have a price for fall cleanup if you were to ask her to do fall cleanup.
Well, should you give her a price? Is that the price?
Yeah. Yeah. It wasn't asked to be a bid, so it was just a price.
Just an estimate, I asked him for an estimate.
For cleanup. And so it's $5,000 to clean up all the cemeteries, I guess, not in pretty styles?
No, not styles.
That's just the leaves?
Yeah.
All the cemeteries?
All the cemeteries, yeah. So I don't know how you want to proceed with this. This, this is the only one we have. We only have a very short time before the snow comes, and the cemeteries are, are full of leaves, there's no question about it.
What is your recommendation as the cemetery committee?
Well, my recommendation is that we've had it cleaned up. This $5,000 was the, nobody blew that one clean up yet. So it's hard to make a recommendation. I mean, it's only one person. And this is an estimate, or is this an actual?
Just an estimate.
Could be high, could be low.
She said that, I heard her say that that's what it would cost.
So I'm not sure how the board wants to proceed.
The $5,000 would be the maximum amount. It would not go over that.
Okay.
Um, I don't have my budget book here. I'm sure we're probably under on our budget for this year, if someone had anything with that.
Let me see, Kim, I have it here. You know where, what page is it on?
Probably page three, down through four, if I may. It's before Hannah, but.
Page three.
Cemetery. So we budgeted.
$13,300.
Yeah, I don't have what we're at now. Last year, we spent $13,360, it's an actual. No, that's coming tax, I'm sorry. We're up here. So we had $20,000 last year, and we only spent $13,368. And we can't even be close to that. We did have Don Lawrence, and that's why we were so low last year.
Okay, but if you add $5,000, you're still under the budget.
But that's good. I would adjust it to over to next June, next July.
That we're in now, this $20,000, right?
Yeah, that's true.
So everything's going to handle what you're going to do when it comes time for the rest of the cemeteries.
If you do $5, you're only at $2,000 left for the rest of cemeteries.
And then you've got the street cleanup, and mowing starts in, in May, June. I don't know.
See the leader leaves in the spring, or?
Having the first, will it be lurs in the spring, or just kind of be a wash?
Whatever trees, whatever trees are not shitting leaves, you have.
Maybe you can clean it up in the spring, it'll be harder. Of course, it'll be wet, and it'll be packed out, but it's doable.
It's not like there's any plants that's really going to hurt, but in there.
But I don't think it's going to hurt anything, it just doesn't look it.
But it's going to be covered with snow, or hurt anything?
Oh, they just don't look good.
Just classified as anything else, I mean.
In about a week, the wind's going to know the difference.
When people want a plot, do we, do we give them perpetual care? I don't know what the, what the rules are. When you purchase it, what are your expectations, other than being buried?
Just mowed?
Yeah. So, somewhat, I would, I don't know if we could grow with perpetual care, but yes. We like to maintain cemeteries, the stones, and, and mowing leaves, and whatever, yeah.
If you wait this spring, you can do two cleanups in one.
Exactly. I'd like to see it done now because let's honor the people that are passed on. Make it known.
But that, unless we're just be included going the spring cleanup? Good?
Maybe we should open the bid and get an idea of what it's going to cost us.
Who's clerk?
She's not here. Sue Allen is the. This might give us an idea of what.
So they're just going to include the spring cleanup?
It sounds crazy, it's still around the same budget.
Exactly. I guess no more burials happening right now.
Burials ended?
Ended November 1st.
Okay.
What have we typically done? Have we typically done a fall cleanup?
Oh, yeah, but we have employees to do it. There are the two.
You know, they do this, you know, a couple days a week, or whatever.
Okay. Annual lawn maintenance for cemeteries and villages, Middletown Cable, Cabell, Paul Ranch, Styles, Burgess. Cost includes mowing, trimming, spring, and fall cleanup. Monthly grounds maintenance work, six months, May to October. Cost $4,000, total $24,000.
So it's $24,000 a year?
Six months, I'd say.
Yep.
Well, I mean, that's a year, I mean, it's.
I'm saying, it's October to, okay. May to October.
But I have a budget to differ from that.
Well, we budgeted. Budgeted $20,000, that's.
$20 for the labor, but then if you look at the whole entire packet, we won't be doing many, Saika.
It's $23,000.
But I don't know, the budget goes from July 1st till June 30th.
Right.
So, and that is what, from when?
May to October.
Well, typically, our, yeah, that's our budget, yeah. You're right, from July to.
Yeah.
You got the spring and fall.
Yeah.
I'm tending to think we should go ahead with it. That's something that we've typically done, and in honor of keeping the cemeteries.
Well, you have to, they have to be maintained.
Right, maintained.
The question is whether we have an outside, or we hire employees to go in and do it again.
What are you going to do?
Well, you've got a couple kids right now.
Yeah, that, that would have been a work of.
So is that a decision you guys are going to discuss once you found out what the bid would be? And weigh out the benefits, the cost? So is that a decision you're making?
If you let it out, it eliminates the benefits.
That's right.
And the liability.
And the liability. And working with Tom and all the rest of the stuff, we live along with it.
And equipment.
And equipment. Remember, we have very little equipment, so we have to put some money into equipment again. Plus Walter used his own equipment, a lot of it. And I don't know, I mean, you know, some of the equipment that you picked up, it's not in very good shape. So it means you have to go out and spend, you know.
A little push mower, I believe.
Yeah, but then re-wrackers, I don't know, is the re-wrackers any good, the ones you picked up? They, you know. All right, so you guys spent another $400 there, and then you got to buy another push mower and.
Can you have a lead for her too?
No.
Sounds like if we're considering outsourcing the general maintenance for next year, that would make sense for us to go ahead and do the fall cleanup this year with another firm, with a contractor. I mean, that sounds like it provides continuity of the cemetery maintenance from the fall cleanup to the new contract.
Well, I don't know, I'd just go with the, the contract and let him clean it up in the spring. And then, then next year, he does the fall.
But, right, contract's next in October, right?
Right.
To that, 2021?
My question is, is it going through October or through October?
Through October, thank.
But it says fall cleanup, doesn't it?
Six months.
Yeah. So it starts, it starts on May 1st and ends on?
Monthly maintenance.
10:30. One.
Does it say spring and fall cleanup?
For 2020.
No, it says monthly grounds maintenance work. And I think what Amber is quoting the $5,000 is for the fall cleanup, the section.
So next October, we have to pay another $5,000 on top of the $24,000, is what they're saying?
And that we have presented, it includes spring and fall cleanup for 2022.
Okay, so the bid.
$5,000 would cost for the cleanup for 2021. And it goes until October 31st, because normally we have snow by then. So it would continue, it would take care of the fall cleanup for 2021.
So it's $4,000 each cemetery is what, is what the bid is? No, no, the total, yeah, no, for the, for the season. There's six cemeteries at $4,000 each, that's going to come to $24,000.
Yes. Styles, you own the office, Styles, once a place a year. I own the ones, I think, and that's what they used to, they had ones, yeah.
But that's per month?
No, 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 that's the total. It's $4,000 for the season for cemetery.
No. It's not like you're cutting a big field or lawn, but it, but it's straight past.
It's tedious.
It's very tedious, and a lot of people, that's why I made that one bid.
So let me make sure I'm understanding the process. We put on an RFP, we got one response.
That's correct.
And that's it, this is it.
That's it.
A lot of landscapers don't have good intentions, it's because it's tedious.
I think there is something to be said now that Walter has passed, that you might consider a different approach to maintain cemeteries rather than having employees. I don't know, it provides good jobs for some people, I'm really brainstorming here.
Well, we don't have anything to do with it.
Exactly. He hasn't been able to find help.
Yeah.
Don wasn't able to find help, because there was somebody to help Walter and him. This has been ongoing for four odd years?
Well, then it sounds like it's time for us to move on and get a contractor, pay the $5,000 fall cleanup, and hire someone to do it from now on.
Just keep in mind, we, we as a cemetery, we are the cemetery agents, we are responsible for the cemeteries.
Well, that's why I'm asking you, your recommendation, Joe, in things like this idea.
My recommendation is I would go with the $22,000 and have him take care of the cemeteries and not have employees, or equipment, or anything else, and they just do it from October 1st to, to November, to October, I mean, yeah, May 1st to October 30th.
I think we're saying the same thing.
And I think you said the same.
Absolutely. So in that context, would you also go for the $5,000 fall cleanup?
No, I would certainly go with this on the other.
If you don't go with it, then it's, it's a lot more work for whoever's taking it over in the spring. I don't know if you're ever trying to dig up leaves that were sat there over there long.
I think we all, we all can post comments, fall cleanup's till spring, and we don't do it for the obvious reasons that they.
Well, that's what happened last year for a lot of maintenance landscapers. We had early snow, and they couldn't do cleanup or something.
I always said you could fit it in, but it's not this week. Yeah, I think we should do the whole package. I mean, there are all cemeteries and many of those, yeah.
I move that we engage Ivor Stevens' grounds maintenance to do the fall cleanup for $5,000 and for the contract between May and October 31, 2022.
Right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ms. Amber? Are you there?
Yes.
Okay, so the board has approved the, the fall cleanup of $5,000, and has approved the contract that you presented for $24,000 starting May 1 and ending October 31st.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next question, though, on the cemetery is, what about? Next question, though, on the cemetery is, what about cleaning up the, um, items that people have left? Are the boys still gonna do that? You know, trinkets and knickbacks that are not supposed to be?
We should, we could ask them to do that.
Let them, Amber and I were to do that?
I'd, I'd have them.
Yeah, I'd have them do the whole thing over that.
And did we get a certificate of insurance?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's here. Then the other thing, though, that we, we, we need to do, not tonight, but we need to have somebody who's going to be the person who's gonna do the, um, schedule of the, of the barriers and, and all that kind of stuff.
And that'll be...
Cool, a sexton, is that what it is?
Uh, they call it a sexton.
Sexton, yeah.
Um, I know, I, I just sold a lot today and another one to sell here soon. So I'm kind of selling them at my window right now. I'm just showing the maps.
But there was, there was some, some, somebody was interested in it. Is that, is that still viable to do it? No. So can they maybe run a little story of what Grafton do, to see if anyone wants to take that job over?
But you need to decide, um, now you need to take something in the budget, I would imagine, for a cemetery sexton, for a stipend.
Yeah.
Because that's not in our budget.
Well, is that possible that we could do an article or something in there? All right. And the deadline is what, it's November?
The twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth.
May we consider, now that we've mentioned this opportunity in a public meeting, that anyone who's heard about it can come forth and say they might be interested?
Go see Bill, can't be the one.
And I certainly will be there to help whoever plans on doing that.
And I, I, I understand that Donna is ill, but the records, did we ever get all the records? Or do we have sufficient records that we know of, Ken?
I think we've got sufficient records. I know that we had some stuff still there in a little black book Walter said. They were more or less his notes, but they're pretty good notes and something that would help us bring that, but not really sure what else he had. But he did give me the map, so at least I got that to work with.
Okay. Highway Committee, anything? Have any? Uh, Parks, uh, spoke to, um, Mike. He has nothing new.
Joe, do you have any idea when the logging is gonna start?
No, I haven't. Uh, Alan, it was Amber, we sent an email to Alan asking him, and he sent an email back saying that he wasn't involved anymore. And so I sent an email to him and said, have the, have the Forester, what's his name?
Tim Morten.